County Board of County Commissioners work session for Monday, June 30th, 2025. It's 11:02 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, to my left, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Corneille and Commissioner Emily Klaus. Commissioner Mihia is virtual and County Manager Leonard Hernandez is here. Public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and will be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. And our first item, which is really the item that brought us here, is Extension of Memorandum of Understanding for Corrections Double Overtime. There is a potential proposed motion, County Manager. Can you kind of give us an overview of what's going on?
I'll invite the Sheriff's team up to the table. Also, I'll invite our Chief Labor Negotiator Cameron. The Sheriff's just walking in right now.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate the Sheriff's proactive communication on this topic. He sent out an email about a week ago that detailed efforts that they're undertaking in this area of recruitment, which is pretty important. This agreement, I understand, expires at the end of this month. And so that's why we're here before you, to see if we can authorize, as the motion says, an amendment to that and extending it out that'll allow Cameron opportunity to connect with the unions and just work that through. But I'd be happy to turn over to the Sheriff to give a little bit of background as to why this is important and valuable to his operation.
Yeah, as you guys know, corrections staffing across the country and definitely in our state right now is still rough. Tomorrow, I swear in three more. So, we're chipping away at the issue. That'll take us down to about sixteen vacancies. And then we've got one going to Olympia Police Department, one going here, one going there. So, continuing to work at it. The double time, as I mentioned in my email, is more of a retention effort than anything else. My hope in the next six months is that I can get together with County Manager and HR, and we can do more of a long-term pilot to this where we don't keep coming back to the Board. And we actually, between the County Manager and I, as long as there's no new budget requests, have the ability to kind of turn this on and off as we need to. There's just going to be times, as we've seen in the past with like court details, for instance, where we're having to pull road deputies in. That might be an instance in the future where even if we're staff, we might want to turn that on to try to fill some of those slots so that we don't have to mandatory people, and then turn it back off if staffing starts to do well again. But, we just, sorry about the late notice. I hate to bring you guys in on summer break. We just realized the MOU is expiring. The jail brought it up to me about two weeks ago, and I was like, I'll try to get it on, and then ended up having to schedule this out. But, as of right now, we sent out the chart that kind of shows the overtime costs with vacancies. And again, this has no funding requests. Our plan is just to absorb this with the vacancies that we have.
Any plans or concepts that we're able to come up with, the Sheriff and HR? We'll absolutely bring that back for board consideration. It wouldn't be something that, as the County Manager, I would just do on my own. We would bring it and bring the Sheriff's team so we could talk about different options that give the Sheriff flexibility but still preserve the Board's authority, budget authority, et cetera.
Okay. And Commissioner Grant's joined us, just for the record. Any questions from Commissioners for Sheriff's Team?
I didn't see the overtime chart. I might have missed the email, but did we happen to have a copy of that?
We have one right here.
Cool. Sweet. Thank you so much.
Yeah. And so when you're looking at this chart, just keep in mind that it's just very raw data, so it doesn't really tell the actual story behind the scenes. So, you would notice that in March, we had twenty-four vacancies. In May, we had one less vacancy, but overtime shot through the roof. We sent five off to the academy. So, when you subtract five from your staffing, that's going to be a big hit. Those five graduate on July 22nd, I believe. So, in July, well, August, you're probably going to see a dip back down in the overtime. So, as we send people off to training, just keep in mind that those types of things are going on in the background.
So, just to break this down, the blue versus the orange is telling us like what you would have spent on the...
No. No. Blue is how many vacancies we had.
Okay.
And then the orange is our overtime costs.
So, it's just telling me that as vacancies... What's the storyline here?
Well, that's kind of what I was saying, is that it doesn't, it's going to look kind of confusing, but the overall trend that you're going to see, if you were to extrapolate this across the last two and a half years, is that as vacancies go up, so does overtime, naturally.
However, this little snapshot says the exact opposite.
Well, this little snapshot, basically, to go into more detail, right? So, like March, we had twenty-four vacancies. But as we filled positions, we had to send them off to the academy still. So then, as we moved into April, May, we sent deputies off to the academy. And when you have, we have a very large academy class coming. We have five corrections deputies who are in the academy right now. So, overtime cost just shot through the roof because we sent five of our staff off for training for two months.
You could have said that, it could say that the vacancies kind of still exist because they're not operational.
Exactly.
That's the piece that's missing.
But, but they were in March. So, they were working the floor in March, April-ish, and they were counting towards that staffing, and then they were sent off to the academy. So, it's just a different concept from the road where we don't see anyone for fourteen months. In the jail, we can immediately get them, I mean, when the wait times for the academy were up, we had people in our jail who were working with no academy time for up to a year, just doing correction stuff. And then they go off to the academy kind of after the fact. Monica's done a good job at CJTC to drive those times down. So now, I would say when we hire a corrections deputy, it's usually less than a month before we can get them into an academy class, and they're off and going four to six weeks.
They need time at the academy, but it can be delayed.
Yes.
Whereas with the patrol side, it can't be delayed.
You can hire somebody off the street. They can go into the jail and work as a staff member without being certified in anything, but an officer can't do that. But they have to do that because they're, they can only do that for, well, until the next academy's available.
They were giving like exemptions because the wait times for the corrections used to be like more than a year. So, they were like, okay. But I think it's in the first year they're supposed to go, technically.
Twelve months.
Twelve months. But they were getting some exemptions when I took over because it was so long. So, yeah, now, I mean, basically, what we do, our practice, we send them as soon as we can. So, the sooner, if we hire someone and tomorrow they can go to the academy, we just get that out of the way.
And this is slightly related, but where did it all land? Like, I know the legislature was like talking about starting a new academy or doing these things to try to alleviate. And is like, where does that stand now? I mean, is there, is the backlog down?
They weren't talking about that for Corrections Academy, where they were talking about that for Corrections.
Yeah. So, they opened up the Vancouver site, which is what's driven that time down. At one point, they tried, they sent one of our corrections deputies over to Spokane, and I was like, never again. Just let us know when a West Side academy is open. I think it's pretty rough on a recruit to have to drive across the mountains every weekend. So now, we either send people to Burien or to Vancouver for both corrections and law enforcement.
Has it been reduced?
Yes. That's what drove that time down.
Is that because they opened new places or because it's just gone down?
Vancouver is a brand-new site.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, there's still some talk about an Olympia facility kind of in the background. And so, yeah, I know the county is looking for revenue opportunities and whatnot. So, that's something that we're going to keep our eye open for.
Commissioner Mihia, did you have something?
No, I'm just, you know, if we're going to be looking at the chart and talking about the chart, I think we need to share it to the public so it's available. And I'm happy to share it. I have it pulled up, but I do not have sharing authorization. I just got it. One sec. Just so the public can see what the Commissioners are talking about, what chart they're talking about.
What we're talking about is a bar graph, Commissioner Mihia?
So, this is not it?
No.
Okay. So then, the bar graph, I do not have that one. Can that one be shared to me and Commissioner Grant?
Yeah. Share.
Commissioner Mihia, we'll forward you the email that the Sheriff sent. We'll send it right now.
Okay. So, did he send it?
Yeah.
The last one I'm seeing is this one. One sec.
Yeah, it should be part of the same email that you received with that information.
Second, then let me pull it. I just saw this graph.
Yeah, there should be a second one in there.
Ah, there we go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's, that's, the second one is the one that was being discussed.
Perfect. Yeah.
Thank you for...
Okay, I've got it. I've got it too.
Thank you so much.
You want to put that up, Commissioner Mihia? Do you have the ability?
Yeah, one sec.
Okay.
Commissioner Mihia on IT right now. So like we discussed a little bit in the email, so the Options Building is vacant right now. So, in one little corner, we have a little, like a little makeshift gym that we put in there for employees to use on their breaks and before and after work. But, our Training Sergeant right now is also building up like some mock cell units and whatnot. One of the things that I think the jail has just struggled with over the years is the training aspect side of things. For a very long time there, I think actually the COA Academy is relatively new in the grand scheme of things. It hasn't been around that long, maybe a couple decades.
I went in 2000, but my academy was four weeks long.
It was only four weeks long.
Now, it's up to ten weeks.
So, they've been expanding on jail training, like over the last couple decades. But one of the things that's tough is that when you're on FTO in the jail, you're in the dorm with fifty inmates kind of thing. So, if you're messing up, the inmates are all watching you the whole time. And so, as, as your FTO is trying to like instruct you, and you're kind of under the pressure the entire time. So, with the Options Building being next door, having the ability to send someone who's on training, who's struggling with handcuffing next door, to let the Training Sergeant just deal with them for a day on handcuffing, I think is going to improve our likelihood of passing people through FTO, because we've had a lot of FTO failures as of late. People who aren't getting the concepts, and they're having a problem. But there's nowhere to really take them and train them outside of just the dorm area. So, having somewhere where we can remove them from that setting, put them across the street, have someone who's an academy instructor be able to teach them, and a DT instructor being able to teach them, I think is going to be beneficial. And then, as we work with the union and HR through this new concept of having nineteen-and-a-half year olds being brought in, the ability to have them from nineteen-and-a-half to twenty years old just training over there in that, that training facility where they're getting some of those extra steps. I actually think what we're probably going to see long-term is that we're not going to differentiate between a nineteen-and-a-half-year-old and a thirty-year-old. They're all just going to go through kind of an extended training process. The one thing that's just been nice right now for Corrections is that we can get them in quick and going. But we're kind of having that shotgun effect with that where some of the pellets are sticking and some aren't. We're just trying to get people through training as fast as possible. I think if we slow down just a little bit and give them a little bit more of that core training before they hit the dorm, where there's fifty people staring at them all day long, that will probably have a little bit better of a success rate when it comes to retaining new staff. Because right now, we're pulling twenty-one-year-olds in and sticking them in a dorm with, with fifty people. And I've shown you guys of the people that are sitting inside of our jail right now, some of the charges that they're, they're in for. A lot of murder, rape, robbery, burglary, some of the serious felony crimes, so.
Other questions for Sheriff's Team? Okay. Is there a motion?
I move to approve an extension of the Memorandum of Understanding with the Thurston County Sheriff's Office and the ASME WSCC-E Local 618 CD Corrections to extend the end date from June 30th, 2025 to December 31st, 2025, and authorize the County Manager to execute the amendment.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the extension to the MOU to December 31st, 2025. Discussion on that motion?
I actually have a comment to make. Just looking at the difference between the overtime and corrections versus patrol, it's clear that you're aware of the problem, we're aware of the problem. It's, it's a costly problem to have. And you've talked, even just today, but over the last several months, or since I've been here, I've heard you talk about efforts to try to fix this problem. Is there any plan for between now and the end of the year, maybe to come back to the table and talk about some solutions that you're exploring now, so that maybe by the time this extension is up, we can say we have some sense of direction on how to bring these costs down?
Yeah. What I would tell you, I think we're trying to solve a nationwide problem at the local level. Plain and simple. It would, it's kind of like the conversation about fixing homelessness or fixing drug abuse and addiction issues. We're trying to solve the same problem that every other local jurisdiction in our area is trying to solve, which is there's five jails competing for thirty applicants for corrections right now. And we're all in a, in basically a rat race to get as many of them as possible and get them trained. And then, that's just the first step. Then we have to figure out how to not get them applying for patrol positions. So, there's been a couple things. I mean, I, I think genuinely, this is one of those problems that's not going to be fixed until the overall law enforcement problem gets fixed in our state, which is that places like Seattle, Olympia, Thurston County Sheriff's Office, when they start filling up their patrol vacancies, that's what kind of kept Corrections at bay in the past, is that there be two or three positions per agency, and everyone's competing for those positions. You know, right now, our entire jail could apply with Seattle Police Department and get hired, all seventy of them. And then, Seattle would still have three hundred more to fill, just to give you some perspective. And so, and all of them would double their, their annual income and have a better retirement system if they did that. Now, they're not going to Seattle PD. But the point remains, I really think that this is a problem that's so far beyond. And that's why when in my email, I start talking about like, these are some things that I think the county really needs to focus on a little bit in our legislative agenda. We really need a study done for the Corrections Retirement System. When you compare it to the Patrol Retirement System, it becomes really challenging to tell these young people not to switch over to patrol. You can retire eleven years, nine years earlier. You can retire nine years earlier and make more money. You know, the Corrections Retirement is sixty-two years old. It's a really long time to stand on concrete. So, I'm looking at this in a totality of things. I, we're going to do a recruiting blast for the pay increases that Corrections has received. Since we got those pay increases, we just had two laterals apply, one from Pierce County, and I can't remember the other ones.
We have two more that I've called in our interest.
Yeah. So, the pay increases, you're, we're seeing some of that parity there that's helping. But genuinely, I mean, there is only going to be so much that, we're going to have a ceiling, I guess is my point here. We're, we're going to have a ceiling in this problem because there's so many external factors at play. But I do think that as law enforcement kind of makes this comeback statewide, and vacancies are filled up, and new people are coming into the profession, that Corrections will start to see a little bit of a backlog again, which is keeping that like five to ten corrections deputies who have bigger aspirations, whatever those may be, from having to actually apply a little bit longer, which gives us more time to hire on the backend. But no matter what, we're going to be hiring Corrections deputies who are looking at other things. Two of the people that we have in our hiring process right now are also testing for like Tacoma Police Department, Olympia Police Department, Thurston County Sheriff's Office Patrol. So, we just look at those things. And, and again, it's, it's, it's going to be an issue. And I want to caveat all that by saying I still think we're doing better off than all of our regional jails. Most of those jails are at about fifty percent staffing. We're at like eighty percent staffing in the grand scheme of things with twenty vacancies, seventy-five percent staffing. So, we just have to keep things in context, I think. And, yeah, I also do think that it's going to be helpful to start opening up the recruiting field to nineteen-year-olds because the, that's a group of individuals who can't apply with law enfor, on the law enforcement side. So, we'll be potentially opening up to a younger subset of candidates who have nowhere else, they, there's nowhere else for them to go right now. They're going to be looking for that, that law enforcement experience building. And our hope is, if I can get you in at nineteen-and-a-half, get you trained up by twenty-one... And our hope is, if I can get you in at 19 and a half, get you trained up by 21, when you could go apply for law enforcement, maybe we've already got you, you know, some pepperball training or some gold leadership training. And we've kind of set the hook line and sinker to keep you here.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. What are some things that the public can look forward to when you do have a lot of these vacancies filled? I know you've talked a little bit about like programs within the jail that might come back or new programs you might be exploring when you have capacity to do that. Do you have any thoughts about what's going on lately with some of those ideas?
Well, right now, I think that what the public could expect is that we would stop coming back and asking for extensions on, on these types of things. But more importantly, I, I think that the one area that I'd really like to make sure that we fix, that we don't have to revisit, is our court staffing shortages. I really don't ever want to get back to a point where we're violating multiple CBAs just to carry out our routine duties. Most people don't realize, so we have a court deputy team and none of them are assigned to trials. So when we have a trial, which usually we have maybe one or two a week, those trials are overtime-based. Those are not funded. So those aren't, those aren't something that we have staff who go and deal with trials. We're bringing inmates back and forth because all of our trials are in person. So they're bringing the inmate back and forth all week. Those are all overtime details. So right now, if we had a full jail, we would just assign more people probably to that court side of things. We'd have deputies available to do transports back and forth without paying overtime and calling people out. So I think first and foremost, while we want to talk about all the really cool, you know, pretty ideas down the road, I think where I'd just like to see is that we don't have burnt out staff and that we aren't constantly reaching into the pocketbook to pay overtime all the time to carry out basic court duties. So I'd really like to see the court staff taken care of and I'd really like to see just the overtime costs disappear. I'd like to see people just come in, work their 12-hour shift and go home and spend time doing things outside of the jail. I think we're, we're getting into a really problematic place when we're spending $305,000 in a one-month period of time. That's a lot of people spending a lot of time inside jail walls. And at some point, I'd like to see our staff have a life outside of work.
Including you. Including you.
I'm okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's different. Truly, there's a lot of scenarios where I think you'll find that a lot of people are not cut out to do corrections work.
Yeah.
Not, not physically, mentally.
Yeah.
To, to be inside of a jail for a 16-hour shift because you got mandatory to hold over, that's a long time to spend inside.
Locked up too.
Yeah, you're locked up too. And to do that, two, three, four, five days in a row is, is a lot. I couldn't do it, so.
Any other discussion on this motion? If you're ready to go, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Give us some more time. We'll start putting out more blasts about the pay increase. I think that that's a good, a really, really, really good contract that they got. And we've already seen the, the quality of the caliber of the candidates, that's a tongue twister, has gone up significantly since, since we announced that pay increase. So I hope that continues.
Cool. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Second item on the agenda is Commissioner Items. Does anyone have anything needs to be addressed this morning?
I just wanted to ask, since we're here, if there was any chance that we could talk about potentially putting some information about knowing your rights up on the county website?
Any thoughts?
Yeah, this is something I've been discussing with the County Manager and he's looking into it. I know that.
We should be able to send something out for your review. The staff did some research. I wasn't here at the time, but based on comments, Chair, that you made about former County Manager and the process you went through, I think the team found those documents.
Okay, great.
They're still active links, so kind of get that out soon and then we can bring that back and have a discussion and add it as a link as discussed.
Awesome. And then I just wanted to clarify, because it came to my attention that maybe last time we had this discussion, I, some folks left with the impression that when I said signage, I meant like big metal or like plastic signs. And I just meant paper, taping it to the door or putting it up inside. So I just wanted to clarify that in case it wasn't clear last time. So hopefully when we come to a decision on what kind of information we want to post, we can post it on the doors as well as online.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Anything else, Commissioners? All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming in today on the abbreviated notice and we'll see everybody back week of the 14th. Thank you for joining.